Hey, good morning, everyone. Ms. Mathias, we are live, we are recording, we are streaming. You may proceed with the executive review session.
Hey, mic's on. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. Please note that there is no public testimony during this review session. Also note for the record that Commissioner Sheta is joining us remotely. First items up are the appeals calendar. Item number 15, 2022, 7 B Z Y, volume 2, 3875, 11th Street, Queens.
Okay. So just to remind everybody, there are two applications for the same subject site. The first one that we are discussing, it's regarding the statutory vesting part of it. And the applicant has provided its response, which applies to both of them. But I want to start with the statutory vesting. So first of all, we did receive the community board vote. Community board vote was kind of interesting, as it was stated at the last hearing by the applicant, was that they took two rounds of votes. And in both rounds of votes, it was defeated. But there was no one vote that stood out in terms of decision. However, the board identified the second vote in their in their recommendation letter, which was a conditional approval. And the conditional approval was that the hotel will not be converted to a housing shelter. Now, since this is a manufacturing zoning site, I think everything that is going to happen on this site, this building, has to comply with all the applicable laws and regulations and governing processes. We are just letting it vest based on the fact that when the site did start, at that time, a hotel was permitted, but then there was a change in the regulation. And that is why it is seeking the statutory vesting pursuant to section 1100. So the applicant also provided a very detailed financial analysis, which I would call it a financial analysis, though it was to speak towards the serious loss. I didn't find anything, any issues with it, but I would let Commissioner Artley Brown speak to that. And the applicant also provided an update on the violation status, and which has been prepared by a consultant who specializes in addressing violations at DOB. And the owner is also in the process of retaining a general contractor to resolve some of these violations. So I think these are steps in the right direction. So I have no other further comments, and I'm satisfied with the submission and with this application. Vice Chair, Shabeta?
I have the same comments, and I was also satisfied by the serious laws report. I found to be detailed. I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Artley Brown?
So while it was helpful to include the financial feasibility report here, that's not a requirement or finding from statutory vesting. So do you want me to still comment on it, even though it's not a finding? Or do you want me to wait till the A case? Because I could comment on the A case. I don't have any comments. But I should speak to it during the A case.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I'm satisfied with the way in which they answered the question in the hearing, as well as the follow-up information for this case.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing further to add.
Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I also have nothing further. Thank you.
Item number 16, 2024, 46A, 3875, 11th Street, Queens.
You know, I just have a question, given that we seem to be satisfied with the submission for statutory vesting. Should we even discuss the common law vesting here? We should?
Yeah, I think they'd rather take on them.
You're right, but we first give statutory office. All right, again, I really have no comments on it. I was satisfied. And they met the serious loss finding, based on how I reviewed it. But I was overall satisfied with the application. Vice Chair Shabeta?
Thank you, Chair. I believe they made the findings for relief requested, and I have nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Artley Brown?
They gave us a very thorough report as to serious loss. And the serious loss here is expressed in a loss in net operating incomes, which then leads to an overall loss in value between the pretext project and the post-tax project. And so I'm satisfied that they met the serious loss finding.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. I'm satisfied with the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I have nothing further to add. Okay, thank you.
Zoning calendar, continued hearing items. Item number 17, 2023, 36BZ, 191 Edgewater Street, Staten Island.
Okay, just give me a second. I'll scroll through my notes. The applicant made its submission in response to comments that were raised at the initial hearing. Revised DOB objection form has been provided for seeking waiver of height regulations pursuant to zoning resolution section 63-343. Applicant provided a waterfront public access and visual corridor document to clarify how the authorization of the how the requirements of the waterfront public access area and view corridor would be affected based on the existence of the existing building and that a city planning commission authorization would be required to modify the size and the location of the visual corridor. So I want the applicant to clarify in its statement the special permit pursuant to which the city planning commission authorization that would be required. ZR 62343 is applicable to the site since it is an M3 zoning district and not zoning resolution section 62-341. Pursuant to zoning resolution section 62-343, height and setback regulations for this section is applicable for development on the portions of the zoning lot landward of the shoreline or on the platform. And it has modified base height and building height. The applicable base height is in M3 zoning district is 65 feet, and the maximum transition height is 95 feet. So I just want to make sure the applicant is aware of that and has that and has utilized that as its base height and setback. And then clarify the extent of the waiver that is being asked beyond that. I have comments on the revised plan. The revised plan and section and elevation, they need to differentiate between the proposed envelope from the existing envelope and identify the applicable height and setback requirements for waterfront blocks. I believe the height and setback applies more to more than one frontage. And also, the applicant needs to clarify why a 15-foot setback above the base height is not possible. The existing building is predominantly a four-story building. And it needs to be discussed in the statement of fact. So the applicant also needs to provide the unit sizes on the plans. I did not see any unit size stated in the plan. Didn't see much of the dimension. So those need to be provided. With regards to the landscaping plan, a detailed landscaping plan has been submitted. It should be part of the complete set. Now, I had a question, I had raised a question regarding the gates that's been proposed. So the gate that has been proposed, especially the gating on the public accessway, I'm not sure why there are two sets of gate. There is one set of gate at the entryway from the street side, and then there is another gate to that would take one to the waterbound portion. And since both of it, both portion of it is publicly accessible, the gate that is further closest to the water, that needs to be removed so that it is accessible. There is only one access point that would control the public, and that is at the street line. Of street line of Edgewater Street. The waterbound portion along the water, per regulation, also has to be accessible to public. And that's why I don't think there's need for two gates. Just one gate at Edgewater Street should be sufficient. So please revise the plan and add a note that BSA is not waiving the design requirements for the public access area. It is to be reviewed or authorized by City Planning Commission. Because I'm not sure where the overlap is between City Planning Commission's authorization and our approval of a plan. So I don't want it to jeopardize one over the other. So while we accept it in concept, if there is more detailing and fine tuning, and the applicant can clarify, that definitely City Planning should have the authority to modify those aspects. And I'm not very familiar with this section and the requirements, so the applicant should clarify that. With regards to the financing, you know, I had a lot of difficulty kind of digesting the analysis, partly because of the way it's been formatted. But I will just state some of the questions that I think I have that I couldn't get clarification on. So one is, please explain why the cost of per square foot for an as-of-right office and banquet is so much higher than the proposed when there is more demo and new construction involved in the proposed than in the office and the banquet? So for example, the as-of-right office per square foot cost is 312, for a banquet is 318, whereas for the proposed, per square foot cost is 274. Also, based on the new comps, it seems the value of all the units from studios, one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, three-bedroom simplex and duplexes, and two-bedroom simplex and duplexes, the prices have reduced from the initial submission from last year. So, and I found the reduction in cost quite dramatic, so I would like that to be clarified. So just as an example, I'll just take a one-bedroom simplex, which was initially, last year, was in the range of 575 to 650K. It was reduced to, based on the revised financial, 340K to 520K. That's a remarkable down in terms of the value, which almost begs me the questions of why do it now if there's such a huge loss in the units? Anyway, I'm sure all of you will have more questions on it, but these are my very basic questions as I'm looking at it. Now, regarding the proposed unit comps, it was also not clear for me from the submission if the adjustment was made regarding the room count as majority of the two-bedrooms and three-bedroom units, which was surprising. Two and three-bedroom unit have one bathroom, and a few of them have 1.5 bath. And this affects about 40 of the proposed units. So given that this is a condo unit, I would think you would want to have as much of the amenities. And these are some of the standard amenities one sees in a two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms. So I was very surprised, and I don't know if that is affecting the return. If so, why take that chance? And is it something that we are noticing as, is this done purposely? Or is there some other reason why this is, we are seeing this layout? With regards to WRP, I want to dwell on this a little bit more, partly because, you know, I think at the initial review, I didn't pick it up. And so one of the comments that was raised in the WRP review is that the site is located within what is known as Primary Marine Activities Zone, PMAZ. And this particular site, the subject site, is located within this critical pilotage service for New York Harbor, which is, as the applicant stated in its submission, it's a 24/7 operation and impacts to the pilotage service, as well as reciprocal impact from the operation in the way of air, noise, and tidal impact on shoreline structures and the proposed project. Now, when this project site was analyzed for a variance in 2006, PMAZ did not exist. It's a new identifier that was adopted into the WRP regulation in 2016. So the fact that the prior board did not consider it because it did not exist at that time. It was not identified as a PMAZ. So I think board needs to be considerate of that and needs to be mindful in terms of how the urban planning, the design, the layout is being done and is responsive to the PMAZ. And in its latest submission, the applicant states that to ensure that there is no impact to the activities within the PMAZ, they are willing to have a condition to the resolution that will prevent the project site from installing a kayak launch or developing an active private marine without first requesting an amendment from the board. And to address the potential noise concerns associated with the activities from working waterfront on the occupants of the proposed development, all exterior window glacings on the residential building will feature a 31DPA sound attenuation glass, which will ameliorate the marine noise that may penetrate the residential apartment. Now, regarding the air quality, the applicant states that the project is not expected to experience an adverse air quality impact. I'm going to leave that to, as part of a SECRU review by DEP to address that. But I think just having a glazed 31DPA is not going to be adequate. Alternate means of ventilation has to be provided. And regarding the ongoing maintenance of the maritime infrastructure, the applicant proposes to install a new riprap wall at the rear of the building. So my first question is, is it a requirement of being in a PMAZ as part of the WRP? Or if it is more of a site improvement? And if that would be required for an as-of-right use? The reason I'm asking this question is that if it is something that is if this is a requirement that would be applicable to the entire site, then it should not be counted as a hardship cost. So we need to start differentiating as to what is required as of right. And therefore, these as-of-right expenditures should not be counted towards the hardship cost of this site because it would be required even for an as-of-right and also for proposed.
May I ask? Wouldn't they be part of their unique physical condition?
Well, no, it's a waterfront site, so.
Oh, so wouldn't it be unique?
No, it wouldn't be. So a detailed noise analysis that needs to be submitted by the applicant. And alternate means of ventilation, as I mentioned, must be provided. Now, I also strongly feel, in light of this PMAZ, the design of the building has to be reconsidered, including providing more distance from the use, the PMA use and the proposed use. And I think, given this existing building has quite a deep floor plate, deep or wide, whichever way you look at it, the building units are also, without the measurements, I kind of again use my standard, you know, measurement technique to identify what is the actual depth of these units. The actual depth of these units is unusually deep. These are like 40-foot deep or 50-foot deep. So the units can be set back from the wall of the building to allow for, if you want to have a terrace, you can have a terrace within the wall rather than protruding out as a balcony. So I definitely do not believe in this situation, a balcony would be, should be permitted. If any thing, the unit wall should set back and allow for a terrace that would be within the building wall. And this would allow for further distancing of the units with alternate means of ventilation and sound attenuation device. And since there is quite a bit of depth on these units, and even one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, they're 40-foot deep. So leads me to other things to think about, how these units would be used or repurposed. And so I think there is room to be set back. And the corridors are generously wide. The corridors are eight, more than five-foot wide. They're about eight or nine-foot wide. So there is enough room for the building units to be set back without compromising anything of the number of units, I would say. And as I'm stating this, I'm stating this because the applicant needs to ensure that the proposed project will not be a detriment to the operation of the PMA users abating it. And I am concerned about that because this is something that we keep hearing on variance cases when a manufacturing use is trying to locate next to a residential use. Oftentimes, they, even though it's an as-of-right use, the concern becomes the neighbors, which are converting to transitioning to residential, especially in MX districts, transitioning to residential. The complaints from the residential uses become so much that some of the manufacturing uses choose not to, or, well, it's choose, and oftentimes financially probably they don't afford to rent the space to leave the site. So I do not want that situation to occur as a result of this. So the applicant needs to provide some assurance that through their agreement, signing agreements, terms and conditions of sales or whatever, that this cannot happen. I don't know how that can be achieved, but I want to hear the applicant out on that. The applicant also clarified that the project will require an authorization at the City Planning Commission. And again, I pointed out the zoning resolution section is not what they had quoted. It's 628-822. I think those are it. The applicant provided truck turning radius because I wanted to understand why it is not possible. And the argument of the narrowness of the street and the narrowness of the distance between the columns makes it very difficult for the turning. And I thought that submission was very helpful. But I think the larger question is, how does the building address the PMAZ in terms of reshaping, reformatting, realigning? And the overlap and the financing? Vice Chair Shabeta?
Thank you, Chair. So I'm not sure if we made a record of this, but myself, General Counsel Chase Vine, and Case Planner, General Pragnum, all did a site visit with the assistance of the fire department at this location. And, you know, walking through the body of the unit and seeing firsthand how much was not salvageable and seeing how tight the turn is and how difficult it would be to make sort of manufacturing use, we didn't really understand the uniqueness of it. Unfortunately, like you stated earlier, there seems to be a bit of confusion in the financials with the change in comps and the cost materials have been changed significantly. I'm going to leave that to Commissioner Artley Brown. I do appreciate your comment with regard to what kind of assurances the counsel can give to ensure that the PMAZ won't be affected or it won't have that negative effect on the continued use of the adjacent project. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Artley Brown?
So I'm going to begin with the general statement, and then I will drill down to the specifics of this report. So bear with me. So the best financial reports are the ones that can very clearly, easily, and simply translate the hardship into numbers. That being said, our strategy at the BSA is aimed at standardizing as many assumptions as possible so that all applicants are on the same plane. Otherwise, a lot of time is spent poring through the assumptions and trying to figure out if they are accurately representing the market. And as a result of that, the message is lost in the details. And so it relates to this case in a few ways. One is by standardizing the way in which the information is delivered. About 20 years ago, the BSA created a format for the feasibility report that all applicants were asked to follow. Another way is by standardizing as many assumptions as possible. Due to previous inflation of development costs, the BSA pivoted to the use of Marshall and Swift for construction costs. All applicants are expected to adhere to this. In this way, no one is at an advantage relative to anyone else in terms of inflating costs. What we don't want is that applicants who employ the most creative cost estimators get the benefits of a greater degree of variance waivers than others. That being said, the addition of extra costs along with Marshall and Swift segregated costs, with the rationale being that Marshall and Swift doesn't adequately capture the costs, is another way of inflating construction costs. In this particular case, the project involves an alteration and not new construction. Yet we are allowing the applicant to apply Marshall and Swift segregated cost analysis of new construction to this alteration. That's generous. The addition of extra costs on top of this unduly inflates the cost numbers and leads us to question their accuracy. This adds time, dragging the case out over many months as we go back and forth with the applicant. Another way of standardizing the report is to understand that the report is frozen in time on the day it is initially submitted. If there are inaccuracies that are pointed out by the board, those and only those factors identified should be corrected. It is not an opportunity to adjust all of the other assumptions in order to elicit the desired result. Because the undesired outcome of that is that the credibility of the entire report comes into question. If the assumptions keep changing, what facts can the BSA use to help it make a determination of the findings? And so with this in mind, I will ask my specific questions. So it seems as if we have an entirely new report. And within that new report, we have several new assumptions that we did not request. And all of that seems as if it's in response to one very critical correction that I requested from the very beginning, the very first report. And what I requested then was that the site value, which actually drives the entire financial report, be limited to only the value of the land in that particular zoning lot, not including the land underwater. For in this case, the land underwater does not have value because it cannot transfer its development rights to the upland site. And there is no contemplation of building out a pier at this site, which would be the only case in which the development rights of land underwater would have value. And so I requested that those changes be made. The lot area here is 46,181 square feet. The maximum FAR here is 2.0. Therefore, the max buildable as-of-right area for the physical land is 92,362 square feet and not 126,852. So what we have here is we have a site value now that is comprised of the actual physical land of the lot in question plus depreciated building. The depreciated building is overbuilt for this area. And when we do the depreciated building analysis, that captures the extra space that has actually been built here. The lot area stays at the 46,181. The lot area stays at the forty-six one eighty-one square feet times the maximum F A R of two point oh. In this case in the report, the lot area was uh calculated to be a three point oh F A R. And then there was a depreciated building that was added on top of it. And basically what that was, was almost double counting the cost of the building and inflating the site value. An additional change that was made here was that the depreciated value of the building actually increased from the previous two reports. So now in my head, I'm thinking to myself, okay, they had a loss of value based on my suggestions of the corrections and they're trying to recapture the value of the site so that this will then drive the ask in terms of waiver. There's no other reason why the depreciated value of improvement, which is based on functional and physical and economic obsolescence, would actually increase over time. That value should actually decrease over time, if anything, yet it increased. So by my calculations, the total site value at this point should not exceed five point three million. However, due to those changes, it's actually six point eight million. That's over a million dollars in value increase. Then I want to jump to the construction costs. The construction costs here are for a major alteration. Yes, a major alteration is a very serious project and it involves a lot of construction and a lot of um cost to the developer. However, it isn't new construction. Still, the applicant in this case is using the Marshall and Swift segregated cost, which actually can provide a more inflated value than just drilling down to a cost factor based on the type of building that's in existence, in existence, which is what we usually see. Now, in this case, they use the Marshall and Swift segregated cost, but then they are also inflating those costs by an additional eleven to thirteen million dollars in each scenario for additional construction costs that that the applicant says cannot be captured by Marshall and Swift. I really don't know why. Because there isn't any subsurface activity going on that they need to account for. And it isn't particularly a complicated construction project. But if it is actually shown to us that it is a complicated construction process that's driving this case, then the next question that I would have for them is, then why are we doing this? And the reason why I say that is because the income that they're showing us that you can get from each of the different as of right scenarios, as well as the proposed scenario, has dropped dramatically. And it's dropped dramatically in order to justify, probably, the recapture of the space that they're going to hollow out on that first floor. And so if you have a situation where your construction costs are getting higher and higher, your total development cost for the project is higher and your income that the project generates keeps dropping, and I really don't understand why, because we actually did not ask for any of those corrections to be made to income. Then the result is that you're actually creating a hardship, self-created hardship in keeping the building because it's not doing anything for your bottom line. In fact, it's actually worsening your bottom line. So the next question that I would say to you is why are you keeping the building? Now, we know why you're keeping the building because that's your only factor of uniqueness. But that's all to say that these are the various contradictions that have been brought to light by the constant changing of the financial report, and that's what I have a problem with. So in summary, the site value is still too high. The construction costs for a major alteration are high and full of extra non-Marshall and Swift costs, which are driving up the development costs and ask it and having me ask the question of if you have an existing building and you're attributing value to it, then why are you using new construction roundup cost estimation and then adding a premium to that? Why not just demolish the building and start fresh? Rents and income fluctuate and are probably changed to justify that the project is the only thing that can be built. There's no room even for a minimal variance according to this analysis. However, it is spoiling their credibility. So going forward, at the very least, the applicant has to restore every assumption that we did not ask to be changed and restore it back to that original report. So that this way we have a baseline that does not change that will help us to complete our analysis and determine whether or not the B and E findings are being.
I want to go back to one thing you said. So there is the how did they, just give me the breakdown of how did the uh, how was the financial included? So there was a Marshall and Swift uh alteration cost, then there was a Marshall.
Marshall and Swift new construction.
So there was a Marshall and Swift new construction cost, then there was a Marshall and Swift segregated cost?
No, no, that was segregated.
Oh, so segregated causes.
And then they made an argument that they include an extra eleven to thirteen million costs uh in costs that would account for the additional foundational um retrofitting required to add the story to the box, basically.
Okay. 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 Wow, okay.
And and now I will turn it over to Commissioner Sheta because Commissioner Sheta has another take on this, but we basically ended the same area.
Okay, alright. Uh Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Uh I want to start to saying that I'm full agree, I'm in full agreement with uh what Commissioner Brown indicated. Uh second, I'm very upset because of what she just described, that sometimes we ask for things to be responded to. We get no response. And we we get surprised by responding or modifying other items that we didn't ask to modify. That being said, last hearing, I did ask the applicant to guide me on uh the breakdown for the structural repair cost that was included in the last uh financials. I was told during the hearing that it's there, I'm I'm quoting the applicant, it is there. And I said, can you show it to me? And the applicant said, uh we're gonna respond to writing on this submission. No response to writing. The repair cost is now one point four million, so it's 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 totally increased. And it's a lumpsome price. No explanation whatsoever on the structural repair item, so it's just one point four million. And it's an area times a unit cost. Where from is this area is coming, where from that unit cost is coming? I have no idea. Uh when in the arena of the structural repair work, you you need to provide some some like details on what are you repairing, how many? Let's say we're repairing the columns by installing concrete jackets the way I've seen in the picture submitted. You 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 have to tell me how many columns are defective, why they are defective, how many jackets you want to put, what is the specification of the jackets? Roughly. And then what is the cost for one jacket and then boom? The total cost for concrete jackets for the columns are this. The same thing for the beams, same thing for the for the concrete slabs. It should be some sort of feedback that makes me feel that there is there is a demonstration that these costs are reasonable, but nothing during the past hearing nor this hearing. So this is, this is like a a startup. Uh and and that I I want to start with like the breakdown for for my comments with with like a major item that's called site work. During the past hearing, the site, during the past financials, the site work, I did look at it and I can share my screen and I'm gonna show you how much was the site work for 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 that financials. I'm not sure if you see my screen now. Yeah, site work. Forty-six thousand dollar, forty-six and a half. This is the the scenario for uh as of right office. If if we move down to this is page ninety-three, if we go to page one twelve, if you have the previous financials open, I'll go to page one twelve. And this is the storage. And I put a color code on it, same color pink, again forty-six thousand. If I go to page one forty-four, this is the banquet hall. Again, forty-six thousand. Residential. One sixty-two. Page one sixty-two. Forty-six and a half thousand. So same amount for the site work. But if you look at the current financials, if you go to page seven, of the car, I, huh, come on. I'm trying to open the file. Give me one sec. Yeah, the total for that item jumped to eight million, one sixty-four and nine hundred. This is for the residential option. If you look at the other options, you're gonna see similar value. And in one of them, I believe it's the storage, and I don't know why for the storage, it's going up to more than nine million dollars. Nine million compared to forty-six thousand is like two hundred times more. I don't know why. I have no idea. Did we get a breakdown for the site work? No, it's the site work, by the way, include concrete pads, uh landscaping and and what's called riprap wall. I don't know why it's based on like a square footage, an area times a unit cost. I believe the unit cost was like seven hundred and change, seven hundred oh seven, if I recall. And that that the total area was like probably fourteen thousand and change. Where from is the area coming? I have no idea. Where for, what is the, what is the feedback for the unit cost? Nothing. What kind of riprap wall? Nothing. What is the section of the riprap wall? Nothing. What is the configuration for the concrete pads? Nothing. I have no clue about this. Nothing was provided. And if something is provided, I would love the applicant to guide me through that. So this is, this is on the the first item, that that the site work. Second, the structural repair, as I said, still that cost increased, no feedback. There is, there is uh one item that I saw in 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 one of the scenarios. Uh and it is bulkhead finishes. I don't know what is that. And it was just included in one item and the total cost for this is one point thirteen. It is just for one scenario. Why it's not in the others? I have no idea. For the residential option, there is a structural steel item, structure steel, the steel beams and columns. The total cost for this is five hundred seventy-two thousand dollar. The structure steel item is needed according to the explanation from the applicant last hearing for the banquet hall option. Because they want to make it double height for the hall. So they cut the concrete slab to make up the the double uh floor height. And then like on the, on top of that, they're gonna put structural steel framing. They're gonna eliminate some columns, that's why they are using some structural steel columns. So I understand that the need for the structural steel, for the banquet hall option, for the for the residential option and the other options, I don't know why they need them. In the structural, in the in the residential one, more than half a million dollar for that item need to be eliminated. I don't think we need that item there. If if the applicant believes that we do, I I'm happy to listen. And and finally, if 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 you look at the Marshall and Swift, Marshall and Swift actually value a building that's intact, that's structurally sound. So that the cost for the structural repair uh item is is already there. It's in Marshall and Swift. So that that the addition of uh one point four million dollar for the structural repair is actually a double counting for a cost item. So that need to be fixed that way. Thank you.
Uh quick question, since the proposed building also will have additional floors and there will, there will be duplex units, will those uh require structural steel?
For the structural steel element, if you look at the drawings on the option for the uh for the banquet hall, there is a layout for the structural steel, beams and columns, it's clear. There is a table for that sections. If you look at the 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 cost estimate, although it's, it's the cost is not exactly there, I I can take it down to three hundred, I believe it's it's about four and change for the banquet hall. Four thousand, four uh four hundred thousand and change. It could be taken down to probably around three hundred, but at least we have something, we have details. But if if you want to tell me that 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 the structure is needed for for the residential option, they should have provided some details on that, similar to the banquet hall item. But they didn't. And that led me to they are not utilizing this item and it need to be eliminated.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I'm just gonna tie together a couple of things, I think, that have been discussed today. Um you asked Chair about whether the riprap wall would be consistent across all of the scenarios and if that or if it's specific just to the proposed. And the riprap wall is included in this site uh improvements line that Commissioner Sheta just walked us through, that is now eight million dollars, give or take, depending on which option it is. Um so I believe the riprap wall is proposed for all of them and what I think that any development would require the stabilization of the shoreline, which is what the riprap wall would be. So.
Then it should not be counted as a hardship.
If, that's what I was gonna say, we should discuss. If that is something that needs to be removed from the report, then we're gonna take that give or take eight million dollars that they've just added back out of the report. Okay.
Okay.
Let's see. The um I wanted to note, there is a unit size table on drawing B S A twenty-three. It has every single unit in a chart, but we need them on the drawings.
Yeah, I want it on the drawings because it is very difficult to go back and forth.
Absolutely. So we just need the areas of each unit on plans themselves. Um. Okay, so one thing I wanted to touch on in response to the P M A Z is that I haven't seen any evidence or anything in the policy of the waterfront revitalization uh plan that states that the resident, a residential use would be in direct conflict with the activities of a P M A Z. Um. So I was looking through the document and I'm just gonna share what is in the W R P. This is a map of uh obviously this part of Staten Island where the P M A Z zones are highlighted in orange. Our site is down here or the site in question. Um and just, I looked at the one just north of us. Um here, uh this is a zoom in of the map. So again, our, the site at one, one ninety-one is down here. Here you have a P M A Z and um you have a brand new apartment complex directly adjacent to it with an extensive waterfront terrace.
The P M A Z in relation to this waterfront, I'm just trying to understand the.
Yeah, let me, let me go back to the map. So this, this pier
Uh huh.
is a, is a part of a P M A Z. You can see that's highlighted in orange here.
Okay.
It was just the first one I looked at and um I also live near Red Hook, and so I feel like maritime activities and residential indirect adjacencies don't seem to be problematic, but that's because I am surrounded by it all the time. Um so I just wanted to make that as a statement because I think there are in the W R P, there are uh S M I As which are significant manuf, I'm gonna butcher this. Think they're significant manufacturing, no, significant maritime and industrial areas. There is a S M I A on the western side of Staten Island. There's Red Hook is a S M I A. There's a bunch of. So it has a very specific indication if it is. An industrial use that is also maritime. So a P M A Z doesn't necessarily imply that. It will be industrial or indirect conflict with the residential use. I think that noise is something that we solve for all the time. It's a noisy city. We have cases right next to elevated trains, et cetera. So if. For the rest of the P M A Z adjacency, I think that I defer to W R P and its review. I believe the applicant just submitted its most recent round of comments back to them. I've said this before, I think that this building. As it is, is functionally obsolete for its as of right uses. And I think an adaptive reuse project like this where. The low floor to floor heights relatively speaking and the close spacing of columns. Is problematic for manufacturing and for modern offices, but. Perfect for residential and to save a building that is in more or less. Good condition, that is structurally built for something much heavier and much. Much more, let's say, requiring much more loading. To go to a relatively light use like residential on this kind of structure would be a sustainable and. I don't know, contextual option that I think generally I support. I understand that there are obviously financial issues as discussed by the other commissioners and as discussed by even the. Discussion of the riprap wall and how the site repair alone has inflated so. Grossly between the last two reports. I won't add anymore to the financials. I think that's been. That stone's been turned, but I did wanna say the piece about how this site could otherwise lay fallow. And so I do hope that the applicant is taking the other comments very seriously. So that we can get through the B and E and figure out a way to salvage this building and bring the public to the waterfront.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for your very thoughtful review and I know you spent a lot of time to come to your decisions. I think the applicant, if you're listening in. There's a lot of homework that needs to be done to get the board to address many things. I think the financial part is the most. Convoluted and difficult one and the question that has been raised. By Commissioner Otley Brown is the cost. If the cost is going to be so high, why maintain it? It almost starts questioning the finding A. So what I would like the applicant to do is to really go through the detail of every building. I mean, go through the detail and identify what portion of the building. Is structurally absolutely sound and what portion of the building. Requires new construction, as of right. I'm not talking about the proposed. And then break down the cost based on that. And then identify what is the additional number of floors that is being proposed that is adding to a separate cost. So provide a breakdown that is easier to follow and maybe Commissioner Otley Brown and Commissioner Sheta, you can provide inside, at least. From my simplistic point of view, I need to understand to what extent the existing building is structurally sound. And the cost associated with this building is not cost to stabilize the building. But to kind of just alter the building. Then to me, that's a two major difference. If the structurally, the building is absolutely not sound. Why are we keeping the building? If this building is structurally sound. And then all of the improvement is to improve the, it's more of an alteration to make it complying to the new regulations. New guidelines and to lay out the units, that's a different cost. But I also strongly would urge the applicant. To stay away from providing any protrusion from the building and reduce the building, will contain the building footprint to what you're proposing. And nothing extends out beyond that. I am very particular about the noise. And unlike, and I appreciate the analysis that Commissioner Yun provided, which the applicant should have really provided. Of showing in the immediate area and other P M A Z site where there is a residential building existing. The difference between that and this is that this is hemmed in between two P M A Zs. And that one, it is somewhat setback, be that as it may. I still feel, given this particular site location and it's being hemmed in by two P M A Zs. We need to be more cautious and allow for more separation. Of the units from the immediate P M A Zs. But that's, we'll get to that. That's part of finding C, but you need to get to finding B, which is almost raising the question of finding A. So I think that needs to be responded to. And please do listen to the comments that our commissioners have provided and respond to them. Commissioner Sheta, you have your hands up.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to comment on the riprap. I didn't wanna talk about this in my testimony, but. Riprap holes and the need for them is mainly for shore stabilizations. Shore stabilization projects usually. Like it's huge projects that these kind of like. Civil engineering projects cost a lot. So the first question I asked myself, when I looked at that, I did review the W R P, I did look at it, read through it. And I did read through the policies. And I was digging for even a word that says that one of the policy or some of them. Call for a construction of a riprap wall. I couldn't find that. All what I saw is that. A statement from the applicant that says that the riprap wall helps such and such. And this is consistent with the policy. Okay, my first, like. Criticism to this. How about the existing condition? This building is sitting there for decades. Do we have an existing, if I'm doing this work myself as a civil engineer. To convince whoever is reviewing that, I would do the following. Number one, I would do a pathometric survey. To see whether we have a riprap wall or not. I would provide pictures for the shore. To show if it is deteriorated or not, if it's moving or not. And this shore, if it was moving. I wouldn't say D E C or whoever is responsible for. That marine activity next door is gonna be sleeping. It could have been like a big issue that the shore is not stable in this area. And I would like. Look at the existing condition, like I said, and if we have an existing riprap wall, does it need to be strengthened? Does it need to be replaced? And if it's gonna be replaced, what is the most cost effective option to replace it? Is it another riprap wall? In areas like this, when I used to like design waterfront structures. I believe the cheapest option is to build a seawall inland a little bit for the lot owner, for the project owner. To save him money. And if something happened like in the other side, the water. There are other government agencies that can take care of that, maintain it, make sure it's stable. Or put a sheet pile wall. And for a sheet pile wall, even inland, for a sheet pile wall. You don't need to put a steel one. You can put a PVC vinyl sheet pile wall over. So there are tons of options. In case the existing condition is deteriorating and the shore is not stable to look into. But they should be based on something, feedback, existing conditions, surveys. Pictures, inspections of the existing structures. And I have seen nothing of these things. In the submissions, in the submissions with the S, including the latest one. That's why I was like, oh, we had forty six thousand before, now it's eight to nine million. And I couldn't find any explanations. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think for any. Costing that is being identified, we need to know the existing and the proposed and what are the alternatives. So it seems. There are other alternatives to riprap that are more cost effective unless riprap is required as part of the. Regulations or so that then again, it's not a hardship. So, but it does affect the cost. So please look into all of these matters. I know we have stated all, it's recorded, please listen to it. So I think that's it today. Oh, there's another case? Sorry.
I guess so. New case, item number eighteen, twenty twenty four forty five B Z two ninety five, Front Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, we received proof of initial filing and hearing notices. Community Board has approved. This application. This is an email that actually we received from the. From the Borough President, I mean, sorry, from the Community Board. It was not in the formal. It was an email. Is that acceptable? Okay, I just wanna know that. Okay, so this is a special permit application to allow a school, a charter school. To be located at the subject site, which is zoned for manufacturing use, M one dash two. Person two zoning resolution, section seventy three dash one three three. It's a corner lot. And there is an existing seven story commercial building and the building already, the school already occupies. A third floor of the building. They want to actually occupy fourth and fifth floor of the building. And therefore is seeking this special permit. So just very quickly, the zoning floor area doesn't seem to be consistent throughout the document. Please make sure it is. And. This is a high school. And the applicant is stating that by school year of twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. They expect a growth of. Well, sorry. They expect a growth of three hundred students and four hundred staff. Again. I noticed two different numbers for two different years for the same number of students. In one place I saw it from two twenty seven to two thousand twenty eight school year. In another place I saw it as two hundred twenty nine to two hundred thirty. So please do check your documentations. So I want to quickly go through the findings. With regards to finding A. It, first of all, one of the threshold of this finding of seventy three, one thirty three is that it has to meet the definition of a school. The applicant has provided the necessary documentation and I was satisfied with that, and therefore it meets twelve ten definition. So with that, let's go through the finding. Finding A is that it has to be in proximity to residential and. Actually, no, 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 no. Sorry, that's finding B. I'm sorry, my bad. I'm sorry. I jumped straight to B. Sorry, finding A is site selection. So according to the statement of fact. A brokerage company was retained to do the site search and it's, this school has two other schools and they are located in the Bed-Stuy area. So they were trying to locate other similar site and the school was before in Bed-Stuy Restoration Building and. Because the term ran out, they are located where they are. They lost their lease, thank you. They lost their lease and therefore they are at the current location. So the first option was to find areas within, near the Bed-Stuy area. And there were certain criteria, those criteria were identified in the statement of facts. As I was looking at the sites that were looked at, I think I saw one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Twelve sites were listed. And of those two sites, thirty one Belvedere Street and three sixty Flushing Avenue. Should not be considered because they are currently in a manufacturing zoning district and therefore. And as of right of school use cannot be permitted, so they need to be removed from the analysis. The applicant also needs to clarify why two seventy five Marcus Garvey and nineteen fifty eight Fulton was not viable when the rental. The rental rate was within the thirty five dollar per usable square foot. That was one of the requirements. And regarding nineteen fifty eight Fulton Street. Which was identified as a site that was in excess of the space that was required. Is it possible that it was large enough to accommodate? Let's say the middle school and the high school together. So the applicant needs to respond to that. With regards to being located close to a residential, to a district where the use is permitted as of right. It is very much within stone's throw away from residential zoning district. The block itself is partially in an R six B. And the subject site is in an M one two, so it definitely meets finding B. With regards to finding C, regarding separation of noise and traffic. From creating adverse effect from the surrounding uses. The applicant states that despite the manufacturing zone zoning classification in which the subject site is located. The area does not appear to contain active manufacturing uses and does not have the potential adverse impact. Associated with manufacturing use. It is more of a commercial in nature. And the applicant indicated that the predominant noise source in the area. In the proposed project really consists of vehicular traffic. Based on my knowledge of the site, I did not make a site visit, but I have been to the area before. It is quite a good mix of residential and limited manufacturing uses. And the manufacturing uses are not high active manufacturing. They tend to be more like storage spaces. But the applicant should clarify those in their analysis as to what the surrounding manufacturing uses are. The analysis, the applicant states that the analysis is determined that no. That no additional window wall attenuation would be required to maintain. And noise level of forty five D B A. However, the school will have double pane sound attenuation window. I'm not sure what that means, would that. If that needs to be clarified for our environmental review purposes, I would like Ms. Benke to weigh in on that. The applicant also states that there won't be any significant adverse air quality impact to the proposed school. Because within the four hundred foot radius, there are no permitted industrial sources or industrial emission sources within thousand foot radius. As I was stating, based on the surrounding uses and the statement, it seems that there would be minimal noise and air quality impact, but. We do have comments from D E P to the submission and the applicant needs to respond to those comments. With regards to the traffic flow. Applicant, that's finding D. Applicant states that they're proposing a no standing school day on both the frontages. Hundred and thirty foot along Front Street and eighty six foot nine inches along Hudson Street. And the applicant is also proposing to install or upgrade ADA pedestrian ramps at the intersection of Hudson Avenue and Front Street. And also is proposing a chain barrier that will be installed at the private parking lot and the curb guard that is located at Front Street. D O T school safety though recommends a rolling gate or a fencing instead of a chain link barrier. To me, it was not clear from the documents and from the plan. How many vehicle spaces are available and who uses it? Just from the photo and from the Google Street View, it seems at most maybe two or three cars can be parked there. And so I would, applicant needs to provide more clarity as to who uses it, how many vehicles. And. I, I mean, it seems like from the view, it's just like an open space. So I'm not sure how a gate. A roll down gate would work. You need to put in some kind of a structure and be rolled side to side. Can you roll side to side?
Yeah. That's how I understood what they meant by.
Okay, because I heard, I read it as roll down, so I figured it's rolling from top to bottom. But my question was, you know, why does it need to be such a high gate? I mean, this is, if this is going to be, and from what I saw from the street view. It's just like a little parking path. So even a low. It's uh, it's uh, it's just like a little parking path. So even a low fence uh uh would be sufficient to keep the way, if the issue is to keep the vehicles from exiting when a student is walking, then uh I mean, if applicant has stated that they are taking necessary precaution to ensure that um they're assuring that uh uh that uh there won't be any loading and uh unloading that will be happening during the school drop off and pickup. And uh
Same school safety wants to give them the opportunity to go in and out of that gate where a fence would be.
Well, I mean, you could have those uh folding fences and roll down there. Other that that is a little bit easier to manage, I think, and might be more appealing to the neighborhood complex. It's a more residential, so. I'm just throwing it out there. It could be indifferent, but I think um um. Anyway. So the applicant also is proposing um to have a combination of school staff and school crossing guard to be stationed um at the intersection of Hudson and Front um during arrival and dismissal. Uh, the applicant needs to show all these proposed improvements uh that I stated and if I've missed any uh on the plan um on the site plan especially, and the plan needs to include the existing conditions, the curb cuts, parking, loading areas, all of those. Because it is going to be part of the approved set of plans that's going to go to D O B. Uh, is there any update on SICRA, um, Ms. Benke?
Yes, uh, the applicant did respond to all the air and air quality noise comments um as well as D O T, W R P and hazmat. So everything's under review right now.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Shabeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so uh the only issue I have uh so far uh is the the first finding of seventy three uh one thirty three, which is uh which you detailed um within going to their site search. Um, the finding B, I it this is clearly uh not more than four hundred feet from a school uh was from a a point where a district where a school is permitted as a right. Uh, C, I do believe there's adequate separation from noise traffic and adverse effects. Um, and the D finding I file isn't met as well. I have no other concerns.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Oakley Brown?
I have no additional questions as regards to this case other than that they uh correct the site.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I do believe that the project meets the findings. I have no questions on it. Uh, I'm not sure if I'm the only one like who has this file or not, but I did look at the existing plans and I couldn't see uh the third floor uh in in the existing plans. So am I the only one who has this or or? And and if 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 the school is currently occupying the third floor, shouldn't we like be showing that on the plans?
Uh. I think it's kind of moot because the existing there they will be uh the school will no longer be occupying third floor. It will be just fourth and fifth floor. Um, so maybe that's why it's not shown. I'm I'm okay with it, um because that we're not going to review the existing uh floor but as a school use.
We'll be. What made me reason is that the exi- the existing set, the set that I'm not talking about done that she is existing proposed. I'm talking about done that before that. She's existing. I did look at the third floor to see how is the school suited on that floor, but I couldn't find the floor plan. That's why. Thank you.
I see. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. Okay, what was I looking at? One second. Okay, um. I also agree that it's the findings and I calculated the proposed area per student and sixty six square feet, which seems um in line or lower than some recent projects that we've seen, uh similar demographic. Um, I went to the site and I walked around the neighborhood um outside of a large Con Ed station that is on the water uh two blocks away. It is a largely residential neighborhood and it's quite sleepy with cobblestone streets uh right next to Vinegar Hill House. It's um and also, so it fronts on Front Street and Hudson, on Hudson, it's all residential except for Vinegar Hill House. And then on um Front Street, it faces a school play yard. So to me, I think that uh the sea, the sea finding was um perfectly fine. The D finding, the no standing zones, um they don't expect a lot of auto drop off or pickup, but I think the two stand no standing zones uh makes sense because uh then anyway, the one thing I wanted to mention is that there's this typo um on page thirteen of the statement of facts and it states the modal split for auto A M drop off is eleven point three percent, but it should be thirteen point five percent.
In which page?
Uh, page thirteen. Because I was looking at the auto drop off to see since they are so far from their catchment area, if this was expected to be increased, but they surveyed the existing student body that goes there already. And um but I noticed the typo.
Right. Yeah, there are many bus lines that is uh connected um from the Bed-Stuy area, I think their catchment area to this and the F train, so.
To the F train. It's not the easiest. Most of the buses head to downtown Brooklyn, so then you have to then transfer.
I see.
Dumbo is not particularly easy to get to, but uh you can get there. So and surely they're getting there now. So.
That's true, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else? This concludes the review session for March eleventh, twenty twenty five. We'll resume at
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty for the public hearing.
Okay, good morning again, we're about to resume. And Ms. Matias, we live, we are recording, we are streaming, you may proceed.
Like to think.
Oops.
Our commissioners, please, make sure your microphones are in.
We're ready. How we go?
Yeah.
Yes. Hey, good afternoon, good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals, public hearing for March eleventh, twenty twenty five. The first item up is appeals calendar continued hearing, item number fifteen, twenty twenty two seven dash seven B Z Y.
I've let Miss Volodare in.
Um, Stuart and Jessica would like to be one if that's okay, Jessica Coras.
Madam Chair, Jessica Coras to add in.
And Stuart, uh.
Stuart, ever?
Yeah, sorry, I can never get people's lines there.
Okay, okay. So this is an appeals case, Ms. Volodare, you don't have to be sworn in, so once your parties are rolling, you can commence to.
Okay.
Add to the board's comments.
So, one, thank you so much, we really appreciate your comments, I guess I'd like to just say for this one, and then we can go to the next one, that we will withdraw it and after this hearing and continue on with the the next one, correct? You'd like us to withdraw the statutory, because we want to pursue the common law.
Uh, I think first you need to exhaust the statutory and then the common law, and I think I'm eager to be, um, to advise me on this one.
Chase.
So with regards to statutory versus common law, do you have to exhaust statutory before you go to common law, can it be just a common law?
You can.
I, I think in the past, uh, there was an option, they could withdraw their statutory and proceed on common law, I think we've done that in the past.
They can't proceed on both, or the board can't close on both.
Board can close on both, but then which one should be withdrawn?
It's the applicant's.
Oh, it's the applicant's option, okay.
And we just, the reason we filed the common law one, just for clarity, is you can only get two years in the statutory one from the time that it's like every two years, so we're almost exhausted, or we are exhausted in our two years of statutory.
Okay, so.
It's possible there are instances in which, not, not this case, but the facts of a case might lend the board to find a serious loss under common law, and that finding is not, uh, relevant to statutory vesting.
O- oftentimes, we've had cases like that where they go to common law.
Okay. Okay, um.
Guess.
So let's then go to public.
The case that we're currently discussing, yeah. The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty two seven B Z Y thirty eight, thirty eight, oh, seventy five eleven Street Queen, should you wish to comment on this case, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six zero seven four three four two seven one, and press the pound sign. At the prompt, after that, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. Trying to find that email, I don't see it.
They did keep. Couple of weeks. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Item number two, number two, item number sixteen. Twenty twenty four forty six eight thirty eight seventy five eleven Street Queens.
Okay. Now, she be sworn in, because it's not an A case?
Right.
Okay. No, oh, it is an A case, okay, the other one was a B Z Y, right?
I think I'll duck out now.
So.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, so, oh, what I was about to say is Elise Volodare from Eric Palatnik P C. Now Stuart and Jessica, I'll give them the floor to say whatever they would like to say, and then we can wrap up.
Oh, well, I wanted to do was to thank you for your time and attention, and I appreciate the, the prompt response that we got. So, thanks again.
And Stuart's been working really hard with the violation attorney, um, and he's been talking to a general contractor, and we think that soon this site is going to be fixed up and safe and great, and I appreciate Stuart.
Yes, we are restarting the process. Once again, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you, everybody.
Likewise, this is Jessica Coras from Coras Consulting, I wanted to add my thanks to the Chair, Commissioner, and staff for taking the time to review our submission and to document the serious loss, and, uh, say I really appreciate your thoughtful and positive feedback. And I'm glad you found the study detailed and overall satisfactory, thank you.
All right. Uh, let's go to the public.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty four forty six A thirty eight seventy five eleven Street Queens, should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two, at the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six zero seven four three four two seven one, and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room and in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
May I add something to the group?
Sure, sure, Mr. Lederer.
I, I just wanted to add that we are, uh, properly taking steps to rectify any of the safety matters, and, uh, I think we will, uh, quickly, uh, you know, rectify any of the, um, bear with me, any of the violations and repair anything that might be a hazard.
Thank you.
Okay, nobody called in, um, so I'm gonna make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we will, um, when should we schedule this for? April? April decision, so please do submit your, uh, withdrawal letter for statutory, right?
Yeah, correct. Here, zoning calendar continued hearing, item number seven, twenty twenty three thirty six B Z one ninety one Edgewater Streets, Staten Island. Excuse me, this is Mr. Rampula.
I have let him in. Is there anyone else from your team, Mr. Rampula?
I see Mr. Salmon, but let's see if that's, oh, but.
Mr. Salmon's with us.
Okay, raise your right hands.
Uh, so it's still Rampula and.
He's right there.
And Peter, is it, sorry, um, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, Peter, I'm sorry.
Those two, I'm poor, it was Josephine Lamatina, part of your team?
Yes.
So we need to let Josephine also in, okay?
What about Amber? Anyone else, Mr. Rampula?
No, I think that's it.
Amber, what about Amber?
Oh, is Amber here? Good.
Same. Is that it?
That should be it.
Okay. Are cameras on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Carolyn? Cartellan, Hutton, Cartellan? Hutton, what's her name? Amber, Cartellan, please, pitcher?
Yes.
Pitcher, little pitcher. There we go, hi, hello, hello, how are you? Okay, um, you have your voice on, a video of thing?
Uh, Amber, I don't think we can hear you.
Amber, we can't hear you.
Is Henry Shalom also part of the?
Yeah, he's there. He's there, ready.
No.
You want to dial in, Amber? Well, she's connected to audio. Yeah. Nope.
No, can't hear you, Amber. Do you want to dial in?
Probably will.
Let her come back in.
I'll dial in.
Oh, no, you got it, we got you, wait, Amber. We got you now, okay. All right, so let's do this, raise your right hand. Do you affirm tell the whole, the truth, the truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board members' questions?
I do.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rampula, state your name for the record.
Well, go Rampula, Rampula Associates Architects. We were attended the review session, I'm going to try to do this in a, in a fluid manner, but I may, um, go to different points at different times. Um, I think the chair's first thing was to get the correct, uh, section number for exceed height. I think we should change, in addition to that, right now, we're vested in with City of Yes, that we can use the old zoning prior to City of Yes.
Okay.
Provided that we get a building department permit, uh, within a year, which is December twenty fifth. Given that we have to go to city planning for the authorization for a modification of the view card, I don't believe we will make the December, uh, twenty fifth, two thousand, uh, twenty five deadline to vest. So we should change all of those zoning computations to be under City of Yes. So we will do that, as, as well of get, as well as changing the height section in the waterfront zone. Um. What I wanted to point out is if you, if, I'm going to bring up the existing conditions plan and show you that we are removing parts of the building already that are beyond repair and should be, uh, eliminated. So, this two, can you see our screen?
No, yes, now we can.
Okay, if you look at the rear of the building, this is the existing conditions plans, that the rear of the building is a forty by eighty five two-story masonry structure with two concrete silos, the silos were already previously demolished, and there's a three-story right next to it that's roughly seven and a half by forty two, that's coming off. Right off the bat, we're removing that from the building. Now, if, now look at the, um, what, our side that we share with the Sandy Hook Pilots Association, that's a straight one hundred and fifty eight point sixty two foot wall, we have roughly seven point eight three feet to the, uh, property line. Now, keeping that in mind, we're going to jump to the proposed condition site plan. So you can see in the proposed condition site plan that we've removed parts of the building on the inside. Right here, we're already setting them back, and we have two balconies in there, we're setting this back, and we have two balconies there. And there were some other appendages here that we are removing, all of this is better seen on B S A twenty three, please go to the next, go to the twenty three, it should be the next page. So on B S A twenty three, those light gray are the portions of the building, go to the right, that one, right there. Yeah, those are portions of the building that are already being removed. Now, we don't have a problem with removing the, um, balconies, the exterior balconies for the middle units that are, go back to the site plan. Those three balconies that are on the outside, right there, down there, right there, there's three balconies there, we'll, we'll take them off. We, we don't want to add any more cost to this building, we're already taking that out. Um, and I think that answers part of the.
Chair. More three balconies that are extending out from that portion of the wall, it's, I think I, I'm counting four or five of them, four of them.
I'd like to keep them.
Hmm?
I don't. The, these.
Which ones are you planning to keep?
One.
No, I'm not, inset ones, I'm talking with the ones that are on the, there are three there, and there's one more in the back.
Well, we'll take, we'll take all four off. One, two, three, and four. So, when we're talking about. So, when we're talking about the special district that we're in, what is next to us is the Sandy Hook Pilots Association. So, when a ship comes into New York Harbor, I don't know if the board knows this or not, but I feel I have to get it on the record. When a freighter ship or any type of ship comes into New York Harbor, they're not allowed into New York Harbor. They have to anchor out in the lower bay beyond the Verrazano Bridge, closer to Sandy Hook, New Jersey. And one of the pilots from the Sandy Hook Pilots Association gets buried out to that ship, and he guides the captain or whoever is piloting the ship through and into New York Harbor. So my, my point in this is that these pilots are regularly picked up and dropped off at the base next to us. There's no manufacturing going on, there is no material of any substance being dropped off or loaded onto ships. This is a professional service for ships at sea. I don't subscribe, to some people, the, the toot of a, a, a boat horn or the hum of the diesel engine may be disturbing, but to other people, it's part of a working waterfront, and they engage it, and they're, they like it. I don't see what we're next to as being something that we overly have to protect.
Mr. Rampula, stop you right there, while you may not think so, you do not know who's gonna purchase these properties and in the long run, how they will respond to it, and what issues they may, having foghorns blasting at whatever time of the day, and requesting the company to keep it to a minimum, or not do it during sleep hours, afternoon, after eight P M and things like that. So, those are the things I'm concerned about, while you may not at this point mine such sound, you don't, you're not going to be the occupant, it's going to be someone else who may have a, and I can speak from my own experience in my apartment building where a noise is of, of no consequence, became such a huge issue for one single tenant that the, my, my board had to like turn over and do amazing thing to shore up the sound just for this one tenant, one occupant. So, all I'm saying is that when there's an ownership at stake of a property who has invested so much money, they can, they, they may feel entitled to ask for anything. And, and if there is a joint ownership of so many feeling the same feeling, you have no control of it. And I want that to be minimized, and, and that's why I want as much of the exposure to, from the outside element be minimized and contained so that the noise attenuation within the building has to be really good, so that there is, and that is very clearly spelled out in your contract.
Sure, I just highlighted a good discrepancy that you noted. Um, here are the boards evaluating whether the imposition of residential use in a manufacturing zoning district in a PMAZ is compatible or not with the neighborhood character of that area. So it's, it's not so much that the board would be asking, it's, the board is not going to be asking manufacturing uses to institute controls for the benefit of this residential use. It is the opposite of that.
Right.
Whether the residential use can be designed and proposed in such a way to, so as to not create a, a harmonious neighborhood character as to the manufacturing uses.
Thank you.
Chair, would you be satisfied with?
And, and we're not just putting the.
Just hold on for a second, Vice Chair Chivita was saying something, let him speak, and then I'll let you continue, Mr. Rampula.
I was wondering if the chair would entertain, uh, if this could be resolved contractually with new owners. Not like a restricted debt.
You can't, you can't contract away someone's rights to bring an action against a neighbor for a noise complaint.
But you could certainly, you can certainly have provisions in a contract that, uh, clearly delineate prohibited use.
Similar to the board's signage in recapture garages or, or tenant recapture spaces. When, when that was under the jurisdiction of the board, there could be a sign about the property notifying tenants, but that cannot prevent them from bringing in action, a nuisance claim.
I just wanna bring up one thing that, uh, Mr. Rampula said, uh, cuz I also looked at this on the Sandy Hook Pilots Association website. Their pilot ships seem to be at a station that is not at this location. The pilots go to the building, and they take smaller boats that are called America class, America class boats that ferry those pilots to the larger boats that ultimately escort the freighters through the channel. The freighters and the larger boats are not here at this location. So, sounds from waterfront activity are coming from the channel, the Ambrose Channel, by and large, I would think. I just wanna make that clear because I don't think everyone's coming in just tuning aboard large boats right here.
Commissioner Yun, I really want to thank you for advocating on behalf of it, but this is the responsibility of the applicant's team.
I understand, I'm just trying to understand the nature of the noise that we are trying to mitigate, that's.
And I don't know, and I do not know, I'm, I'm guessing based on what my limited experience of these uses. So it is the applicant's job to fully explain the nature of operation and the kind of impediment, uh, the kind of, uh, noise elements that can be an issue, uh, that the residential building has to ameliorate in, within its site and cannot rely on the other one. Without knowing it, I'm looking at a worst case scenario, and that's what D E P is going to do.
I'm sure there are going to be freighters acting at Sandy Hook Pilots, Sandy Hook Pilots is a twenty-four hour, seven day a week, three hundred and sixty-five day a year operation. Uh, it's likely assumed that there are wayfinding controls that are used overnight to get the boats in and out, and, and you know, which might create a, a light or noise pollution, uh, to the neighbors.
So, we will maybe, uh, detail, uh, description of the, the PMAZ uses and go through the detailed twenty-four hour operation, what happens, where, what are the various possible, uh, uh, uses, uh, situations that needs to be addressed. And I don't want to guess and don't want to think of who would love what, it is really what is happening in real time, need that explanation, and, and, and that can help the board from guessing and, uh, and, and come up with much more concrete design solutions that will ensure that the building is tight, sound tight, airtight, light tight, if that, that, that's what you're talking about. Mr. Rampula, go ahead, I know I cut in in lot of what you were saying, please go ahead, my apologies.
No, no apologies necessary, it was all good information, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Yun. I wanted to point out that the recommendation to put the sound deadening glass on just two sides of the building, but we chose to do all four sides, and in addition, this is a ported place concrete building, so the exterior walls, um, are pretty robust in terms of preventing sound from traveling through the walls. Plus, they'll be studded out on the inside to receive, uh, new insulation and, uh, new sheet rock, so it's really, it really comes down to the windows, and that is the highest um, sound deadening window that you can purchase, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber. Um, so with that being said, Chair, I just wanna revisit your request that the balconies not be on the outside of the building. They're, they're really not where the floor that we wanna preserve, because we've cut the building back seventeen point three seven feet, seventeen point four seven feet, and we have those little balconies kind of within the building, but they're, they're, they are standing on their own. Want to read if you're okay with that before I physically go back to the board.
And I, I just wanted to point out as well, we did do noise monitoring out of the site. One of the locations, location two, you can see in figure two point seven dash three of the E A S um, is directly on the waterfront, you can actually see in, uh, in the photograph, there is boats, um, passing by. Um, and those, those noise levels were relatively low, and you know, in the range of sixty, where seventy is what would warrant, uh, seventy and above here is what would warrant attenuation. So the street level was noisy, which is what warranted the noise attenuation that's required here. So as Phil said, um, you know, the, the proposal to, to wrap the building, um, in thirty-one, with thirty one decimal attenuation is above and beyond what's warranted based on the noise monitoring that was done at the site.
Okay.
Thank you, Amber.
I, I think those, a lot of those discussion needs to be brought into the waterfront, um, a W R P review comments to respond to this on the PMA. And, uh, and those, those arguments need to be stated, to what the existing condition is, and based on that, why it would not be an issue. But by stating it's not gonna be an issue, it's not going to be good enough for me. I don't think it's gonna be good enough for those who are reviewing W R P. And that is Department of City Planning, and if you have to go to City Planning for authorization, that document is going to be a fallback doc again. So you need to provide all your facts and, and analysis in the W R P to back, back up your argument.
Completely understood, we'll do that.
So Chair, does it also make good sense to incorporate, um, that section into the neighborhood character findings?
Sorry, can you repeat it?
Does it make good sense to take what Amber is going to write about the noise and incorporate it into the neighborhood character findings?
Yeah, but I would still want those balconies that are extending from the existing building, well, not the interior core, but the extending, existing building wall to be removed. And if you want to have balconies, you, what I suggest was that you set the units back so that you have a terrace kind of a situation, if at all, if that helps you near value of your land, uh, unit or something like that. But definitely not, um, balconies extending out of the building.
Understood.
Uh, along that frontage and along the waterfront frontage also.
Understood. Okay, then now I, what I'd like to do is transition into waterfront zoning, which, which touches on, on a lot of things, and the, the board is the one who brought it to my attention, and why we have included putting up the bulkhead and doing the waterfront access on not only the proposed conditions, but the as of right conditions. The board very correctly pointed out that within the waterfront regulations, it, it has its own, um, definition section of a development. And development within the waterfront includes a change of use. It's not just an enlarged rental floor area, et cetera, that's in twelve dash ten. So, under the as of right conditions, it is a change of use for the banquet hall, and it is a change of use for the storage facility, and of course, for the residential, it's a change of use, which automatically brings in visual corridors and waterfront public access. And in order to get people down to the water and into this area, this bulkhead has to be, there is a, a short bulkhead there, and we are replacing it with a new bulkhead that will allow these improvements that are in zoning. So, um, yes, we, we, we're incorporating it in ours, and, and we will have to modify and go to city planning, but we're also incorporating it into, uh, the as of right conditions. And this, in terms of putting, a, a riprap wall is one of the most inexpensive walls to install along the water's edge, and it is usually preferred by the state D E C um, in, in fostering marine life. There's more marine life that can be generated in a riprap wall than in a hard, uh, pier structure. So that, and it's less expensive, and that's why we chose to do that. Um, it, it was, it was, it's purely based on experience with other D E C, um, waterfront jobs that, that we've worked on in the past. So that's where that cost of eight million dollars comes, it's not.
May I interrupt you, please?
I wouldn't, sure.
Okay, what kind of bulkhead you're installing? For me, that looks like it's a wall, right? What it says, you see the text where it says, uh, a riprap limit, approximate limit of riprap?
Yeah.
Yeah, wha- what kind of wall is this? What kind of bulkhead?
It is right here, Commissioner. Approximate limit of riprap.
Yes, I'm asking, I'm not asking about this, I'm asking about the, you see the hatched diagonal forty-five degree, uh, wall like?
Right here.
Yes, this one, what kind of wall is this?
Theoretically, it was all riprap. We weren't incorporating a, uh, I can see what you're saying, from here to here, it should be a different type of wall.
So this is not a sheet pile wall or a vinyl wall or a concrete sea wall, it's nothing like that?
You're right, Commissioner, this.
And what you, what you utilize, what you utilized or elected to utilize is a riprap wall, which is, I agree with you, it's one of the preferable things to D E C, it's one of the most environment-friendly walls that could be installed, and I, I strongly agree with you, it's one of the cheapest walls that could be installed, but if it's one of the cheapest, I, I'm telling you, I'm, I, I claim that I, I do have expertise in waterfront, and I have installed tons of structures, starting from, if, if you, if you know the Four Freedoms Park, I built the sea wall there. I built tons of like marine structures overseas and here in U S, and I inspected them, including seawalls in Long Islands, sheet pile walls, even, even like south of the country. So, if, if we're using you, if you're, if you elected to utilize riprap wall, which is one of the most inexpensive walls, and I can claim that a steel sheet pile wall here can cost roughly one and a half to two million dollars. Why would be the most expensive riprap wall, or the most, that most inexpensive wall, which is riprap, cost eight, eight millions? Wha- what is, what is, where is the catch here? What I'm missing?
The rest of, the rest of the platform has to be supported by piles. And I believe from my discussion with our structural engineer, that the riprap wall would have to be supported by piles also.
No, 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 wait, 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 let me stop you there, no, no. Do not waste your time, riprap wall is, is pieces of fraud. You just put it in the ground, and that's it, it's not supported by piles. You cannot, if you support a riprap wall by piles, that's not a structural engineering, probably it's something else.
Commissioner, I am told that the bottom of that, where the water is between mean high and mean low, is really muddy, and that we should put support in there or else our riprap wall is gonna sink in deep. If we wanna sink it in deep, that's fine. The other, the other issue, which is more important, is that this can't be done from the land. We have to come in by barge and create that structure. That's a big expense, so when you, when you're gonna do this by barge and you're gonna bring it in, well, we're not gonna pay non-union wages, we're gonna pay union wages to build that wall, which is a thirty percent cost increase over anything. So, you, you asked where the eight million dollars came from, and I'm telling you where the eight million dollars is coming from. And that's across the board for existing and proposed conditions, and that's mandated by city planning.
So is that also for, it's for office banquet, self-storage as well as residential?
Correct.
So for what use would it not be required?
If, I don't know, uh if they kept it as an existing manufacturing building. And they didn't add a square foot to the building, and it wasn't a development, and it wasn't a change of use.
So it's the change of use that's kicking off that special cost, basically?
Yes.
Alright, so here's my, and I'm just wondering about this right now. Is that if your change of use is um instigating such a high special cost? Isn't that a form of self-creation?
No, that's a that's by legislative fiat. We don't want to do it, but we're required to do it. We didn't self-create that.
Right, but it's you who's suggesting a change of use that's actually creating a premium cost. And it's by legislation, meaning it affects everybody. And so it affects everybody evenly. No matter who they are, whether or not they're coming before us for a variance, then it's not a premium cost. And if it's not a premium cost, then shouldn't the overall costs be capped? And not be allowed to drive the project. The driver of the project, to me, seems to be the premium costs that are a direct result of whatever hardship you're claiming. And in this case, the hardship is a depreciated building.
I have a two-part question. One is first, um while everybody's acknowledged that riprap is the cheapest. Uh uh construction mid uh process for shoring up the bulkhead along the waterfront. I still did not get a response as to why there was such a big jump in the cost from the initial review from the proposed one. Um so that is one. Second thing is going, there's a question for Commissioner Ottley Brown and uh is that. I understand where you're coming from in terms of uh, you know, the the it's the change of use uh that is causing uh the need for the riprap. I'm not so sure, uh Mr. Ampula, if the change of use to an as of right use would also promulgate that. You need to look into that and 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 analyze that. That is one part. That's your assignment. You need to look at that. I I'm not so sure. Um the other part is that assuming that it is uh it is going to require an as of right use. Uh what Mr. Ampula is saying, that that would also trigger a need for riprap. The building as a manufacturing use is obsolete. I think the studies have have shown that this existing structure is not feasible. To be used for manufacturing. So shouldn't that be factored in?
Well, this is where it gets difficult, because what we're trying to do is standardize the costs. And standardize the cost, meaning the regular cost of construction. And so premium costs, if they're allowed. Would inflate that standardized cost of construction. So we have to be careful which premium costs we allow to to. Inflate the standardized costs of construction. So I could say a similar um. Question or analysis would be if somebody's building an office building. And they're saying the office building is going to cost an exorbitant amount of money. Not because it's an office building, but it's because the choice of facade that you want to use or the choice of curtain wall is so incredibly expensive. That it actually is distorting the overall construction cost. I'm not saying that those costs don't exist. But those costs perhaps should be dismissed from the overall analysis here.
Can I? Okay, and and please, to to their need for the riprap wall.
Wait, I just want.
Commissioner Sheta, um I think Vice Chair Shabeta spoke first, so let him go and then I'll let you go um I'll let you state uh.
So I I see that analysis and I I certainly appreciate it. I I I think that there like. Right now, I feel like there there's a there's a a way to to separate these facts before us now from that circumstance. Because he cannot stay as a manufacturing use.
But he can.
No, but but it's not viable, the area isn't viable for him to have a manufacturing use. That was his argument, and that's part of it.
It's about not zoning creating hardship.
No, it's it's it's, well, so in any event, I think he has to knock this building down and.
But he's not. Is hardship.
Apologies, it's difficult to hear Commissioner Ottley Brown. It was breaking up. Thank you.
Oh, I was just saying that I felt that this was a market issue, that industrial is not feasible. And it's not a result of the zoning. And so.
But does that make it therefore self-created?
Well, I'm posing the question. That's the thing. I I said, I'm, this is what I'm struggling with. And it's not so much that, you know, it's the cost is driving. The project because of its enormous amount. And that's what's leading me to question this. Do we allow this? As a cost that it's placed the standardized costs of construction. Because what we're trying to do here is anchor these standardized costs to costs that are generally accepted. And so this is taking it way out of there. Eight million dollars, eight million dollars on thirty million dollars is a lot. Right. So that's all. So I'm raising that question.
And I I I really think it'd be wise, uh um Mr. Ampula, if you could, if you could um give us all the opportunities that you have with this property and and show us why it's not self-created. In writing.
And I think the question has a hang up.
I I will, whether whether this was, whether this riprap wall was required or not, and we didn't do it. We didn't have to do it. It still stands that the building itself has low ceiling heights and over a hundred and sixty columns that are spaced together closely. That do not make it feasible for a manufacturing use to use that building.
So 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 has a hang up and the disconnect between the building is an obsolete loss for manufacturing use. But a portion of it must be preserved for the residential proposal.
You got, you're you're, I'm sorry, Council, you're broken up. I I didn't, I heard every other word.
We think the board's having a disconnect between the statement that the buildings are said as obsolete for any manufacturing use. And as a is it's a total loss, but that portion of the building should be retained for the proposal.
I I think I can understand that certain like a manufacturing use requires certain type of certain type of building structure like they described in their in their statement of facts. Uh and while uh a portion of that building could be used for residential and doesn't need to be changed, while it would not be uh sufficient for manufacturing. I think that's what the argument he's making.
I I.
Good, but then when the costs to retrofit become very large. Then you wonder, what would it be if you just demolished what's existing? And while maybe from an architect's point of view, I do understand Commissioner Yun is like. Wait, let's retrofit rather than get rid of. The question is, what is driving the project to? Ask for the additional recapture on top of the building. Because that's. That's part of these incredible costs. It's not simply a conversion of what's here. It's actually a partial demolition and a retrofitting and a strengthening of the foundation because of the partial demolition. And then the reconstruction on top.
Yeah, so that 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 is actually, oh, sorry, I have to follow up on what Commissioner Ottley Brown's saying. To me, what the disconnect is that I I think I'm almost there. By saying that, yes, I do feel this building is obsolete as a manufacturing use because of the low ceiling and other things. What I do not know, and unfortunately, I couldn't go on a side visit, what I do not know how structurally. You you the portion of the building that is being demolished is a very small portion. But the remaining portion is being retained. Is that remaining portion structurally sound? And what, how sound is it that requires? So little work versus if you were to tear it down type of thing. I mean, I I I mean, because what I got heard from those who went on a side visit. The fire department was very concerned about the safety of the building and that they wouldn't send their own people to the site. So something to that effect. So how structurally sound is it? So I don't know, was a structural report submitted of this site that indicates that the building is very sa- is very sound. And therefore does not require, and there only minimal, you know, where there uh where there are two uh gaps, those need to be repaired. So I, we really need to know the extensive amount of repair work that is causing to the cost. Uh addition and the additional increase in floor area that is being asked of. Why? And what is that causing cost? Because what is the hardship of the existing building and improving the existing building to for even an as of right use? And then what is the loss factor that you're trying to gap? By having these additional floors, which is adding it to a significant amount of cost of building that out. And and I think in my simplistic mind, that is where I'm having problem connecting all of those pieces.
So let me, can I address that, please? So we approach this building the same way that the previous board approached this building.
This is a different board and standards have changed, so please try to um.
Chair, you stopped me from talking. Can I finish my sentence, please? I have, I have to comment on on two things.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, let me go back to Commissioner Sheta because he did start and I did break his chain of a- argument. Come uh Mr. Ampula, do hold uh hold on to your response. It it may answer all of our questions. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Sheta, and my apologies.
You you you're discussing something about the engineering, and I'm I'm feeling pain here. The need for the riprap wall is not related to the use. The only thing that trigger a need for a wall, or a bulkhead, or riprap. Is just deterioration deterioration of the coastal line of the shore area. If the shore area is deteriorating. Then a wall need to be placed in to stabilize the shore. So this is bullet point one. Bullet point two, I did look at from Google, I did look at the shore area. And I can see, and I can share it, share my screen right now if if you allow me. And and you can see that there is something existing there. What I said during my testimony. Give me one second. Not this one. Yeah, that one. Yeah, this is, this is where the building is. These are the two silos that were marked down. This is the part of the building that was taken down. So if you look here, there is something, there is mud, there is soil, there is cobalts. There is some sort of existing riprap or side slope. So they're gonna start from, they are not gonna start from nothing. There is something there to start with. So they can put a a a, like I said, a vinyl sheet pile wall that could be much cheaper than even the riprap wall. It sounds like that the ground here is is very stable because the building is not on piles. So it that that the call for supporting that riprap wall on piles is just incorrect in engineering perspective. A a riprap wall is is this, I I did build this wall myself. This is the Four Freedoms Park. If if you look at the riprap stones and it's placed from here, from upland. And and moving moving forward into like towards that the the water, you can build that side slope, you can put terms. So it's 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 not something like you're you're, yes, this this wall here was built. Using a barge that's coming from the that the water side. But for the riprap, it's just stones and excavator and and operator, that's it. It's so the need for piles, the need for a barge, all this is not gonna fly. That that the other thing on that that the building stability.
Where are you getting the stone in there if you're not bringing it in by barge?
I'm sorry?
How are you getting the material to build a riprap wall if you're not bringing it in by barge?
You you store that riprap in here, like in the back, and you just start taking it with the excavator and put it in.
What? We we.
Yes.
You have a twenty-foot wide sidewalk on the on the west, on the northern side. Uh that can be used for uh moving stones on a s- one of the small little.
These these are two, these are two to three ton armor stones that you gotta start with.
No, you're not putting armor stones, you're putting a riprap wall. That's why you said. It's, look, these are not two to three tons pieces. You, can you see them?
Are you subject to wave?
This is in New York too. Yeah, this is New York. This is the Four Freedoms Park.
Yeah, but you're not subject. You're not subject to wave action there, Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
You're not subject to wave action.
Who said, who told you that?
East River, I live by East River. The current is constantly changing. It is one of the most difficult navigable water because of the. Water flow coming from the Long Island Sound and the bay.
Okay, okay.
And this park, by the way, was designed to withstand five hundred years' shore.
I'm gonna play a clean game on a muddy field here.
Okay, I'm going to stop this discussion here because I we need experts from who does marine engineering to give us a report. Of the co- the existing condition of the uh of the bulkhead. Existing condition of the bulkhead, we want that report and indicate where it is uh where improvement is needed. And the kind of improvement that is requ- what what improvement that is required. And the improvement that would be provided and the cost associated with it. I need that. I'm not going to have this back and forth. I realize. You know, uh Commissioner Sheta's design was much uh more recent and it is more in with the recent regulations, but. It is not for us to answer that question. It is for you to answer that question. Get a marine engineer or whoever the expert engineer who deals with this. To review that existing condition, provide a thorough analysis of the existing condition and what kind of structural stability will be required. For any development to be built there, not just the proposed, but the as of right. Yes, Ms. Prenga?
I just wanted to add that the original resolution from two thousand and six indicates this is an erosion hazard area. So um just wanted to add that.
It's a what?
It's primary.
Erosion area.
Erosion hazard area.
Well, um things may have changed from then, so need to provide a more update of how it is being considered. And what is therefore required and and what 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 is uh and what is the existing condition? And what would it take to make the existing condition to meet the requirement uh of being in that zone? I think we are is making lot of assumptions on the financing, and that's why all these questions are coming up. So this is a complicated site. And it uh so you a much more background analysis has to be done. To justify the need for these premium costs and uh justify for the cost and establish that these are. Costs that would be required and uh and then determine whether this is a premium cost or not. So I think a lot of work needs to be done, and I don't want to just um undermine either of your statements, but you need to back it up with everything.
Okay, that's.
That same thing need to be done for the building as well. The building is said, just said that to be structurally sound. But if you look at the financials, there is almost one and a half million dollar for structural repairs. And like I said, I did ask for a feedback last hearing, and I was told it is there. It is not there. In the past financials or even in this financials. It's it's just a lumps some price for that. It's not there.
Okay. May I? May I continue?
Yes, please.
About the square footage of the building and why we're adding it back on. Where the existing building is a hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet, which includes the lowest level. The lowest level we cannot convert and we cannot utilize. So we're getting rid of it and we're providing parking underneath. So we're recapturing that square feet, that square footage up top. The same way that we're creating the indents within the building to have those semi courtyards that you see on the side, we're recapturing that floor area.
It's a big choice you make. You don't have to. You can keep that courtyard and therefore you don't have to recapture it. That's a design choice you're making.
Also, we, I think that the concern of the board is that you're not entitled to recapture the floor area that you carve out. That whole idea is that we figure out the minimal variance based on the financials. And so that's why the financials have been so scrutinized and so many comments have been provided. There's nothing that says that because you carved it out that you deserve to get it back on top.
Yeah.
Only the past, only the past resolutions say that. They did the same thing in the previous board case and that's where I took my cue from. They recapped whatever they would take out.
Yeah, but you really can't hang your hat on something that was submitted twenty years ago.
Sure you can.
No, you can't. It's a different board. It's a different time. It's different circumstances. Everything changes. You know, if and you really have to look at it brand new.
And can I just say that this this was approved twenty years ago and it was never extended, nothing. So this action is almost not effective anymore. I mean, so the fact that it was approved, there is no carryover, it's not a extension of time and an amendment. In, I mean, this project just died. It never got exercised. So that that action has no value.
I respectfully disagree in terms of past history of cases that I've worked on, but be that as it may, you asked for an explanation as to why we're adding on and how come. And I'm explaining to you what our methodology was. And it's whatever the, we we feel that we have an existing building that's a hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet and we should not lose floor area for the existing building. So we're recapturing whatever has to come out because there's a a a change in uh flood hazard elevation. That whole bottom floor.
The cost of building that additional floor uh and that is a part of the question that both Commissioner Sheta and I have is what is the cost of just building that additional uh uh recaptured floor area? And is it really, I that's, I I, to me, lot of these things are seem to be like built in uh choices that is adding to the cost and therefore adding um so to me that is concerning. And as it is, the building is overbuilt and uh from an affair point of view, we are, we don't have to give the all of the floor area.
Right, you are getting a change of use to a more valuable use with your project. You don't necessarily are guaranteed to keep the same amount of floor area if a building is overbuilt by zoning.
You can do this.
For today, that's today's zoning. Up until waterfront zoning came into effect, we were out to, we were allowed to use the area underwater. But now that's changed.
But so now that's all to say, that's why this is a whole new look. Things change in twenty years.
I get that, but the building hasn't. So it's an existing noncon- nonconforming building.
Well, I think the building has deteriorated even more, which has added to the cost also.
And and I, that's, this is what my concern is and it's not exactly, I'm not, it's I'm a bit on a tangent, but this place has been uh empty and in the same state for the last twenty years. Uh it is a, it is a a uh an attractive nuisance that they have, they routinely reboard up so young children don't go in uh and get them and and like get themselves into trouble. Um so I really wanna see if we can find a way to work with you, Mr. Ampula, that we can get a project that uh um is something that you'll, your client will deem profitable but without overdoing it. And I wanna aim towards that goal.
That's far from me.
That has to do, the reason why all of these questions are coming up, Mr. Ampula, is simply because the financials, the assumptions that are key assumptions here changed and changed pretty drastically. And so every time you change something in the report to try and make up for something that we have identified as being inaccurate representation, you are destroying the, your own credibility. And that's the problem. So then when we look at everything again, then we look at it even finer with more of a microscope. Because why are these different things changing? So that's why you have to be very careful. It's not a financial report, it's not a tell me what I need to do to get across the finish line and I'll change A, B, C, D, and E to get there. It all has, kind of makes sense, has to be standardized and has to stand like tall and strong like a building itself. It can't be like, oh, you found an error here. Well, we'll beef this up. Oh, you found this, this shouldn't be included? Well, then let's cut these sales prices here. It's not gonna make a difference. We notice these things and then we question, why are you doing it? And when we question the motive, that's where your credibility comes into question and that's when it becomes problematic.
I understand that wholeheartedly, Commissioner, but you're making assumptions that I this is kind of a Henry Simon to talk about why.
This question has just questions. There is no more that needs to be said.
In everybody's interest and to keep the project viable, I I'm gonna suggest everybody think very carefully what you're stating. It is on record. And I honestly, you know, I would say honestly, we are trying to shape this building in a way that would meet the requirements and and the questions are being raised because of the lack of clarity in the information that has been provided. If they were provided with a lot of substantial background, clear background, clear fact analysis, then maybe many of these questions would have not been risen today. But they're being raised because they were promised, they were not delivered and or there are assumptions that's been made, rightfully so on your side, but did was not shared. But we need all of these fact information for this project to move through. I'm going to ask you to listen to this video and and go through each one of the points that we have raised and provide all the required studies that we have asked for and the analysis to back up all your arguments and justification for the financial cost. Because that unfortunately is pushing us back to question A and I do not want to go there. I think we are off it, but it's raising it and I don't want that to be raised because if it's A is no go, then we cannot even proceed. So please help us, get us beyond A and B and then look at the at the neighborhood character. I agree with Commissioner Hartley Brown, I'm sorry, Commissioner Yun, there are ways to address it. But I don't think we are, we have even gone past that. So please, please listen to it. We are trying to help you answer the questions that we need to be answered so that we can get past A and B at this point.
I appreciate that, Chair, very much. And we will. But and it's all, the big part of this is about the financials. And I'd like Mr. Salmon, if you can spare five or ten minutes, to explain why the cost per unit uh on the sales was reduced.
No, because as I said before, what you submit at the beginning, you stick with. You only correct the items that we say as per that day of submission are not accurate or are wrong. It does not give you license to give a whole nother look with a whole nother bunch of comparables and a whole nother you, you can't do that because then it's a moving target or a game of whack-a-mole. We cut that because that's wrong, that assumption has been debunked. And then you come up with, oh, wait, but let's, let's look at this again. No, we're not looking at that again. And short of maybe the real estate market there falling off of a cliff in a few months, which is basically what it did. Because you're talking about units that went from like four hundred and fifty thousand to you to losing fifty percent of their value. Now it's three hundred thousand. That's like, I'm sorry, I'm not convinced. And that it comes coincidentally, when you're forced to get rid of your extraneous site value cost? I have to say, hmm.
Mi- okay, I'm going to, Mr. Ampula, I think from what you're gathering is you're just raising more and more doubts in your analysis. What was accepted in the initial, leave it as is. What was not accepted in the initial, remove that and then address the other questions and comments. Um I myself, who is not a financier, was, I was shocked to see such a dramatic drop in the price values of all of these units. And I for one, I also don't think the layout of the unit is helping you. Um but that, you know, you need to look at your design. I've never seen two bedroom units with one bath or three bedroom units with one bath being sold. Maybe rent, sold? Not really. And that too in Staten Island? Not really. So please, do do yourselves do listen to what we are saying. We are not trying to kill this project. We are trying to understand where this project is going and trying to make it work with whatever little information we have. And right now you need to provide more information and more clarity. Okay, I'm gonna go to the public at this point.
Okay. Good to do. The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-three thirty-six BZ, one ninety-one Edge Water Street, Staten Island. Don't you wish to comment on this case dial six six nine two five four five two five two? At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six zero seven four three four two seven one and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, press the pound sign only. Excuse me. When you permit it in, you press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss.
I I don't see anybody from public on our uh sign up. But but while we are waiting for the clock to run out, Mr. Ampula, do you want to add anything um in terms of what the next steps you will be undertaking?
Well, I I know the number of reports that we have to do and the studies and and we will do all of that. That's not a problem. It's just gonna take some time. Um I did wanna point out, I I guess you don't want me to point out is that we listened to Commissioner Hartley Brown and part of it had to do with getting rid of the costs associated with the parking garage that we would build across the street. So in terms of appraising the uh the building, when we can't look at the parking, that affects the price of the units.
No, because the assumption is you're going to provide the parking, but that's not on the zoning lot. So your financials should be talking about the zoning lot. You have to provide the parking. So you should price your units as if they're gonna provide the required parking.
Okay. You can do that.
Okay. Much time. Okay, how much time um do you need?
I don't know, I'm gonna need at least three months.
Okay, I I think best would be we keep it open at this point, based on how your um report, analysis and everything is coming through, please reach out to our project manager um and then finalize a timeframe. But right now I'd say three months uh to be determined. Yeah?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
New cases, item number eighteen twenty-two-four forty-five BZ, two ninety-five Front Street, Brooklyn.
This would be Mr. Becker. There are two Mr. Beckers. Okay, which Becker? Okay, Mark.
It's Mr. Excuse me, could um sir, who has the other name, Fred Becker, could you identify yourself? Change your name on the screen or?
I'm Rafi, I'm Rafi Kalimadine, I'm the school leader here at Amber. Uh Fred Becker is our attorney.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much. Good to be here.
Is that all, is that all your parties, Mr. Becker?
Amber Cartilian should be on as well.
He's here. Anyone else?
No, that's it.
Okay, everyone, I have to swear you in. So run with hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on the seat of board on the questions?
I do.
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record and please proceed, respond to board's comments. I review second.
Frederick A. Becker, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh we listened to executive session. Uh I'd like to clarify some errors that were made and this will answer Commissioner Sheta. The school is now occupying the fifth floor, uh no longer the third floor. So that's why there's no third floor drawing and we will correct that in the papers. Uh we will correct the zoning floor area inconsistencies. We will go over the plans and the analysis and everything else. Uh apologize for the misunderstanding there. Um the issues of the uh other site review. I missed, Madam Chair, you had mentioned two sites should be removed. One was Belvedere and one I couldn't catch the other address.
Um yeah, just one, um uh I think it's two thirty-one Belvedere and the other one is the six thirty Flushing Avenue. They are both in.
Okay, that's fine. I'll remove, I just couldn't catch the name. Uh with regard to the other two sites, you raised Marcus Garvey uh and Fulton. We will explain why they, with further detail, why those two sites were not adequate. Primarily, um initially, I will tell you that basically the both of them, the costs of upgrading the mechanical systems, the fire and sprinkler alarm and the renovation costs push them way out of consideration, but we will address those in writing as well to you. But that is why they were not adequate. Um let's see, Amber will clarify the manufacturing uses in the surrounding area and also the uh window issues. I think there were some uh concerns the board had. Uh we do show on plans the uh various items, the curb, if you look at P one hundred, the curb cut is shown, the pedestrian pad ramps are shown, signage is shown, stop signs, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not sure what else we're missing. I think they're um fairly well or very well um documented in terms of egress to the school uh with key access, security camera, et cetera. So um.
Hold on, I'm trying to open the, which plan?
P one hundred. On the left, you'll see the curb cut and ramp. There's the uh entry with key card. There is street sign proposed. You have on the right side, the street sign proposed, the pedestrian ramp, stop sign um and other items.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed, I I went through all the other plans, but just.
I I'm sorry to hear, Chair, Madam Chair.
I said, I went through plans, but it's this one, so my.
Yes, I'm I'm sorry, everyone. It's either someone's typing or something and it's being picked up on the mic very aggressively.
Okay, not me. Um the only other issue that I would discuss, and this is a fairly will by the Commissioner Yun, you mentioned the type, but there was a typo on the modal split on page thirteen. Could you just repeat your comments? It went through very quickly and there was a percentage issue that I couldn't quite catch.
It was the auto AM drop off that was listed as eleven point three percent when I believe it's thirteen point five percent.
Uh eleven point three thirteen.
But I have it, sorry, Amber Carton with GZA, I have it written down, so I'll double check that, make sure it's consistent.
Okay, the last issue, and this is potentially seemingly more problematic, is the chain is the fence to the um parking area. Uh this is a comment that was made by DEP um according, as Ms. Cartilian has told me. If the board notes on.
DOT school safety, sorry, Fred, this was a direct.
School safety. Um basically, you have, if you look at drawing, um photo view one, if you can pull that up, anyone, or if you can pull into your files.
Which one?
Uh, photo view one.
Oh.
That one. The entire space, it starts at the um chain link that the chain link fence and there's a concrete brick wall. Um, that is where our property is from the concrete brick wall to the building itself. That is a total of twenty-five feet. Um, it can barely accommodate two cars at most. It is controlled by another tenant in the building. Um, so there's an issue of whether we can even put a gate there and the logistics of putting a gate there because it is such a narrow space, we certainly can't put it in front of the handicapped ramp. And at the same time, we are also, as we've stated in papers and can restate for you, that there will be a security guard uh at that look or a school staff person at that location during the entire arrival and departure periods to ensure the safety of the students. So that all being said, and Commissioner Vice Chair Shabeta mentioned it, we would submit this is not a reasonable or feasible um change that can be put in that location and that the the fact that someone would be standing there at all times and we can chain link it will be adequate. This is not an active manufacturing building. It's not an active commercial building for uh arrivals or departures of of goods and materials. So we think it is a bit of an overreach and appreciate your consideration and concern. Um, that is all I have to say.
Did you say a chain length fence? Are we just talking about one chain?
I some, whatever we could put, something bigger than a chain. It, I mean, something that just makes more sense. Putting a gate is almost, you'll block off half the space if you put a gate. So it could be a chain with signs on it, no, you know, that hang from it at the time, which would effectively be more of a solid fence as opposed to one little thin link of chain.
So you're proposing like a just like a chain, literally a chain going from one side to the other.
And to make it more prominent, we can certainly hang, we can A, make it a chain that has, let's say, a foot or two of something below the chain. Or we can have it where there are signs attached that say no entry between whatever the hours we propose. I'm, I'll say hypothetically eight AM and nine AM. You know, and then three and four. I don't, I'm not stating those are the hours, but whatever hours I have in papers. And plus there is going to be a person physically standing there.
So would it be one of your staff or a a security guard?
Uh.
It would be a staff personnel.
Okay.
Throughout winter, this this man's going to be standing out there?
Not throughout, just during drop off and pickup.
Oh, okay.
It's it's right. It's our drop off and pickup times. Yes. I mean, it's no different than what you, the board has approved in the past where we have a staff person from a school who stands on the sidewalk letting students come in, come and go when we have transportation. It's very similar, yes.
Honestly, I personally don't have any issue with it. It is something that's been raised by the school safety. Um, I it would be helpful if you can provide more clarity in your submission that the number of vehicles that come here on a daily basis and that that fact that it's written by another tenant, though it should be their responsibility of the building management to ensure who is using the parking space and and how that is monitored. And there could be signs posted on that wall on and on the chain that says parking only from so and so forth and and that any loading, and I'm assuming in the building there are other occupants. And when there is any loading and unloading happening, are they using that parking area for loading?
Yes, they would be.
And so coordinated with the building management, I'm assuming. Uh, then somebody cannot park there when that loading and unloading is happening. Um, and 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 that loading and unloading will be done during non uh when the school is not in the process of dropping off or picking up.
We, I can certainly provide something and and discuss that with the client and the building owner. And do do remember that um the, as shown on plans, our entrance to the school is not on Front Street. It's on Hudson Avenue, which is another street and it is it is the furthest end from this location as possible. So the students who are coming and going in the building may not even interact with this. If they cross the street one way or the other at the corner of Front and Hudson, they won't even interact with that space.
Two things, Mr. Becker. First of all, yes, you're right. Hudson is the main entrance and the and the secondary ADA entrance is from front. So that is one part. Second part is there are many buses and subway stops, which from your map, by the was not here, where the pedestrian uh from which direction they'll be coming. Will they be mostly from uh um downtown on Front or will they be coming on Hudson? Because that would also affect the question that the school uh safety is asking, where is the most of the student volume coming from? Therefore, do you need to have a much more secured uh system where uh if for the vehicular uh vehicles that are going to be parked or loading and unloading that's going to happen needs to be more controlled and manned because the students are coming. Yeah, I I don't know where most of them. So you need to use your data and analysis to help support the evidence and 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 factually state where most of the students would be coming from. Where are they coming from today? And how would that carried out with three hundred new students and?
We totally understand the school safety concerns. We understand the board's concerns. We're we're not downplaying those concerns. We're, and I believe all of the chair's recommendations for signage on the walls, talking to management, signage on the chain link fence, combined with the uh person who will be on site at that point should be very helpful and should potentially adequately address the concern. So we will provide all of that in writing to the board.
Right. So you need to kind of Mr. Uh Ms. Cartalian, do you want to add anything?
No, sorry. I was just going to say that, you know, we can also have a discussion with DOT based on the, you know, give them a narrative of what the operations are intended for this uh for this per cut and then also what we're proposing, what we've discussed and, you know. Because they were, they said, you know, a gate. I think their exact language was a little bit vague, so maybe they'll be, you know, open to just what we're talking about here.
Okay. Uh, I would, um, I think you do need to talk to your building management to find out the loading, how the coordination of the loading and unloading is going to happen so that you do not block the curb cut. Um, and and uh and then that these are going to happen when students are not being dropped off or picked up. And all of, and the other part is that on the parking lot, uh, you know, you need to discuss what's the typical business hours of all the businesses that are located in in that building? And what is the school hour? If the school hour is starting at seven or eight o'clock in the morning and the businesses are going to mostly be from eight thirty or nine, you may not have that much of 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 uh overlap. So I think it would be helpful if you provide those timelines and understanding to kind of help minimize the conflict.
Okay, this is, I would just state, this is not a parking lot for the building. It can hold a maximum, it holds a maximum of two cars.
Mr. Becker, please listen to me. All I'm saying is that I understand what you're saying, but that's not how school safety is looking at it.
Fine. We will, we will provide information. We'll speak to the tenant who utilizes that space who are, and we will find out from them how they utilize that space if they in fact utilize it. And then we will provide you in writing with a response that will address the concern.
Right. Yes, I'm trying. I I I think I made in my statement, this is, this does not seem like a major issue, but we do need to ensure our sister agencies who are reviewing it have been satisfactorily.
I totally understand, and we will get you all the information that should provide a level of comfort to you and to the sister agencies.
Yes, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify something real quick because I don't think this needs to be responded to in writing. Um, with regard to noise and air quality, we did have a DEP letter um in October of twenty twenty-four that was responded to in February. Um, you know, as I think Commissioner Yun stated, this is not the, you know, an area where there's, you know, uses with industrial process emissions. It's kind of mixed, you know, warehouses and residential um of those nature. So um DEP didn't have any specific comments related to the air quality in the area uh. Uh, with the exception of mentioning the Con Ed facility and the staff associated with it, which is no longer in use. So we've sent a response to that. And um regarding noise, um, you know, we did noise monitoring. Uh, we also included projections on the two playgrounds that are adjacent to the school and added those noise levels in. And even with that, we fell below below uh levels warranting any kind of noise attenuation. Um, so DEP upon review of that shouldn't require any notes on the plans or any uh requirements related to window wall attenuation. I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. All right, um, is there anything else?
Not on my end unless the board has any questions.
Hmm, no, um. Let's go to the public. We don't, thank you.
So the case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-four forty-five BZ two ninety-five Front Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six zero seven four three four two seven one and press the pound sign. At the prompt after that, you will press the pound sign only. Once you permit it in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little end at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized in any forum, you will have three minutes to discuss.
Um, how much time will you need to?
I think in on my part, I can do the modifications, the response to the parking area um and the other uh changes, the statement within two weeks. I would say the, it's up to Amber and Tracy to tell me what their timing is.
Right. Uh, so we're in the process of doing the uh the level of service analysis for this project. Um, and, you know, obviously there's DOT review involved with that. Um, in in regards to getting just the items that were brought up on this hearing, uh just a matter of a few weeks, uh assuming that DOT School Safety can get back to us and uh concur with what's proposed for the curb cut here. But in the long run, you know, we do still have the level of service to do, um, submit and have reviewed by DOT.
Miss Becky, so what's under review by DOT is not finished, is not complete. There'll be more.
Uh, the level of service, yes.
Okay. I mean, we don't have an estimate, but they are, I believe they're reviewing something else as well. Um, yeah, we're waiting from all the agencies also has Matt. We are waiting from DEP, so it will be.
The detailed pedestrian analysis, Tracy, is what's pending.
Sorry, what'd you say?
Uh, the detailed pedestrian analysis is what's pending. As well as the warrant, the warrant studies that were requested.
Okay. All of them now.
I I throw the question, Tracy and Amber, how, what's a good guess to that you think they might be, everything, you might get a response back from the agencies?
I would say probably two, two months at at minimum.
Okay.
So then, um, okay, there's, that's the answer, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We're looking, potentially, we would get things back, do you think, by in time for June ninth and tenth hearing, which would be submission around May nineteenth, twentieth or so?
The twenty-second.
The twenty-second, that's two months from, little over two months from now. Should we shoot for that?
Okay, we'll keep that. We'll hold the date.
Either the ninth, tenth, or the sixteen, seventeenth of June, Madam Chair, whichever works better for you.
That's fine. Let's keep those as options.
So when it would be our submission would be the question.
Um.
The twenty-second or the twenty-ninth?
Uh, why don't you coordinate that with the uh, I I don't have the gate in front of me, so Jella will get back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
That works. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, everybody.
You too. Bye bye.
Concludes the public hearing for March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Thank you one and all.